Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the June Phoenixville Borough Council meeting. This month, as we have in for the duration of the pandemic, we are doing a virtual meeting for public participation. Members of the public will be able to attend the webinar that is currently being broadcast on Zoom as well as watch it on our borough website. Council is here in person tonight for the first time. Public participation will be broadcast through the speakers. So during our public participation periods, both at the beginning and the end of meeting, as well as during the public hearing portions of tonight's meeting, you will be able to raise your hand and staff will be able to unmute you and connect you to our sound system. So we will be able to hear your public comment. With that, we will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, Mr. Manager, can we have a roll call?
Not used to this yet. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Dalton. Ms. Stugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Soto. Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Heewald.
Present.
Mayor Urschler.
Here.
Managers here, assistant is here, chief is here, solicitor here, and you have a quorum, sir.
Thanks very much.
With that, we have minutes from our May regular Borough Council meeting to consider tonight for approval. What is council's pleasure for the May Borough Council meeting minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the May 11th, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Any questions on last month's meeting minutes or changes, amendments, et cetera?
Yep. If I could, one change. On page 11, it says, Mr. Weiss stated that the new arborist hit the ground, and he brings a lot of experience to the table for us. It was hit the ground running. I thought that was fairly important distinction. Thank you.
We'll get right on that. And since two of our members of council are on a slight delay, I just want to make sure any questions or comments from them. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. It's gonna be weird having to count the screen as well. Okay, moving on, we have our first presentation tonight. I believe if staff will let in Dale Umbenauer from Mailie LLC, we have our 2020 audit. Momentarily.
Dale, I promoted you. If you'll turn on your camera, we'll be able to see you.
Okay. Is everyone okay to see me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome.
What I'd like to do is share my screen.
It is turned on for you, Dale, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Now, are you all able to see the independent auditors' report?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Dale Umbenauer, and I am the manager on the audit of the borough's financial statements. Here to report on the year ended December 31st, 2020. So this is the first page that's pretty important here. This is the independent auditor's report. And this talks about management's responsibility for the financial statements and then our responsibility with regards to the audit. On the next page, at the top of the page here, this is our actual opinion. And says that in all material respects, the financial statements are fairly presented. Now, we do have an emphasis of matter again this year for the COVID. Just to let the reader know that we're still thinking about it. And then here at the bottom, we have some new information this year, and that's because the borough had a single audit for the first year in a while during the current year, and we'll get to that later. But for now, it just needs to add some more information in the front about the other audit opinions that you're going to see in the back of the statements. So the next part of the financial statements here is related to government auditing standards, which is also related to the single audit that I'll cover at the end of the presentation. This is management's discussion and analysis. So this is management's opportunity to describe anything that was significant during the year, any significant changes and the reasons for those changes. This, as you can see, it says it's unaudited. The only thing we really do with this is we make sure that these numbers agree to the audited statements, which we're going to go look at now. So this is our statement of net position. I'm going to blow that up for a little bit because I have a hard time seeing that. So it brings it down between governmental activities and business-type activities. Governmental activities is all the fund level statements and then the reconciliations that we'll go through in a few minutes. So on a fund level, I mean, a total basis, the borough had governmental activity, total assets of $55,676,987. And this includes capital assets, the net pension asset. Business-type activities, we had total assets of $48.4 million, total assets of $104.06 million for the year. We have some deferred outflows of resources related to the pension and OPEB. And then we have our liabilities, total liabilities of $26.8 million. And note that that includes our bonds payable and our compensated absences and OPEB liabilities. On the business-type activities, we have total liabilities of $6.3 million for total liabilities of $33.1 million. We then had some deferred inflows of resources related to pension and OPEB, with about $3.4 million. And what's left is net position. The net position in capital assets, that's the portion that is invested in capital assets for the year. And that is just the capital assets less all the debt that's taken out to incur those capital assets. So we had a net investment of capital assets on the business-type activities of $23.8 million. On the governmental activities, we had $16.1 million. We had restricted amounts on the governmental activities of $4.3 million, and we'll go over those restrictions in a minute. So we had unrestricted net position on the governmental activities of $6.3 million, and then the business-type activities, $17.9 million for the year. This is a statement of activities on the government-wide basis. So way this reads is left, right, and top to bottom. So our expenses are presented first. So on a governmental activities basis, we had $12.5 million of expenses for the year, and that's broken down at $1.5 million for general government, $6.6 million for public safety, $3.4 million for public works, about $706,000 for culture and rec, and then $429,000 on interest on long-term debt. Our expenses for the business-type activities were about $8 million, and you can see that's broken down by water fund of $3.7 million, sewer fund of $2.1 million, parking fund of $357,000, and sanitation fund of $1.8 million. Those are all offset by charges for services. And so we can see we have charges for services totaling about $1.3 million for the year for the governmental activities, and those are things like your parking tickets and permit fees and things like that. And then in the bottom, we had our user fees for the business-type activities totaling $9.8 million. We had some operating grants and contributions in the current year of $2.2 million, and then $5,333 in the sanitation fund. We had capital grants and contributions of $471,047.530 in the parking fund. The bottom section here is your general revenues, which is your your real estate taxes, your earned income taxes, your local services taxes, investment income, and that total of revenue is your general revenues of $9.6 million for the year. And for the business-type activities, it's about $54,000. So we had a positive change in the year of $1.1 million in the governmental activities side and $1.9 million for the business-type activities. Now, this is the governmental funds. So you'll see, you'll see how this is different from the balance sheet that we just went over. So this does not include the capital assets and long-term debt or anything like that. These statements are focused on current resources only. So the general fund had total assets of $25.1 million, and the other governmental funds had total assets of $2.3 million. We had total liabilities in the general fund of $936,000, and then some unavailable revenues from property taxes that had not yet come in of $155,000. We had some AP and accrued liabilities in the other governmental funds of $125,171. And then that brings us down to our fund balance. So our non-spendable items are the ones that are listed as prepaid expenditures. We have restricted amounts of $17.9 million in the general fund and $1.2 million in the other governmental funds. We have committed amounts of $281,500, and we have assigned amounts of $4.5 million in the general fund and $1 million in the other governmental funds. That leaves us unassigned amount of $1.3 million for the general fund. This page is reconciliation. This is from the schedule we just looked at to the first balance sheet that we looked at. And what it does is our fund balance adds back all the capital assets that we discussed before, adds back the OPEB and pension-related items, adds back debt-related items to get to the net position of governmental activities that we had seen before. The next schedule here, this is our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds, which is the general fund and then the other governmental funds. So for the general fund, we had total revenues of $12.3 million and about $1.4 million in the other governmental funds. The total expenditures in the general fund were $10.6 million and $2.9 million in the other governmental funds. For the general fund, we had an excess of revenues over expenditures of $1.7 million. And for the other governmental funds, we had a deficiency of $1.5 million over revenues. We issued, sorry about that, we issued some bonds in the amount of $14.3 million. We, those came along with some bond premiums of $811,000. We did interim fund transfers out to the other governmental funds to cover the overages, and we sold some fixed assets. So at the end of the day, in the general fund, we had a net change in fund balance of $15 million. And in the other governmental funds, we had a net change of $343,000. This schedule takes us from the net revenue that we just discussed of $15.3 million. And it adds, basically takes back the issuance of the bond because that becomes a liability, and it adds back all the other government-wide related expenditures and come back to the change in net position of the governmental activities of the $1 million. This is the statement of net position for the proprietary funds. So this breaks the business-type activities down into the four funds, water fund, sewer fund, parking fund, sanitation fund. So we had total current assets in the water fund of $10 million, total capital assets of $14.2 million, so we have total assets of $24.2 million in the water fund. Some deferred outflows of resources related to the pensions and OPEB for total assets and deferred outflows of resources of $24.4 million. The sewer fund, we had current assets of $6.6 million, total capital assets of $13.2 million for total assets of $19.7 million. Some deferred outflows of resources, again, related to the pension and OPEB, for $76,000, total assets and deferred outflows of resources of $19.8 million. Parking fund, total current assets, $869,000, total capital assets, $575,000, total assets, $1.4 million. Pension and OPEB deferred outflows of $19,799 gives us a total assets and deferred outflows of $1.5 million. The sanitation fund, $1.9 million current, about $1.1 million in capital assets, total assets, $2.97 million. Deferred inflows, our deferred outflows related to pension and OPEB of $81,000 gives us total assets and deferred outflows of about $3.1 million. Next page, we'll look at the liabilities and the deferred inflows. Again, for each fund, we had total current liabilities in the water fund of $453,000, non-current liabilities of $1.2 million, total liabilities, $1.7 million, and then we had deferred inflows related to the pension and OPEB of $300,000. So we ended up with our net investment in capital assets in the water fund of $13.1 million and with an unrestricted amount of $9.3 million. In the sewer fund, our current liabilities are $617,000. Our non-current liabilities are about $3.8 million for total liabilities of $4.4 million. Add in the deferred inflows of $139,000 related to pension and OPEB. And we have net investment in capital assets in sewer fund of $9 million and an unrestricted amount of $6.2 million. In the parking fund, we have current liabilities of $850,000, non-current liabilities of $29,261 for total liabilities of $30,000. Add in deferred inflows of resources of $37,000, and we are left with a net investment in capital assets of $575,000 and an unrestricted net position amount of $822,000, excuse me. In the sanitation fund, we have current liabilities of $45,696, non-current liabilities of $176,616, our total liabilities of $222,000. The deferred inflows of resources for the sanitation fund is $146,676, leaving us a net investment in capital assets of $1,075,000 and an unrestricted amount of $1.6 million for the year. This is the income statement for the proprietary funds. So we had total operating revenues in the water fund of $4.4 million, operating expenses of $3.7 million for operating income of $671,000. We had some non-operating expenses of $4,700, giving us a change in net position of a positive $666,788 for the year. In the sewer fund, we had total operating revenues of $3.2 million, operating expenses of about $2 million, giving us operating income of $1.2 million. We had, again, some non-operating expenditures of $111,198, giving us a positive change in net position for the year of about $1.1 million. The parking fund, we had total operating revenues of $368,000, total operating expenditures of about $357,000, giving us the operating income of $11,209. Some non-operating revenues of $363, and our change in net position for the year was a positive $11,572. The sanitation fund, we had total operating revenues of $1.9 million, total operating expenditures of $1.8 million, giving us operating income of $78,725. We had some non-operating revenues of $2,009.09, giving us a change in net position for the year of a positive $89,634. This schedule is the statement of cash flows for each of the proprietary funds. This just shows the ins and outs of cash for the year. It shows how it records the beginning cash to the ending cash. This is a reconciliation that goes from the direct method to the indirect method. These are the statement of fiduciary net positions. This is the, basically, the balance sheet for the pension funds and the custodial funds. So we had $32.6 million in total assets for the pension funds, all of which was restricted for pensions. The custodial funds, we had cash and cash equivalents of $809,000, and all of that is restricted for custodial purposes. This page is the income statement for the pension funds and custodial funds. So we have total contributions to the pension funds of $970,109. We had total investment earnings of $4.5 million for total additions of $5.5 million. We had total deductions of $944,000, giving us a change in net position of the year of $4.6 million positive. The custodial funds, we got $2.2 million in contributions from developers. We had escrow payments out of $1.959 million, giving us a change in net position for the year of a positive $209,000. This starts the footnotes to the financial statements. This goes for the next few pages. So I'm not going to go through every one. I just highlighted some here that I'm going to go through. Point out. So the first one is the deposits and investments. And this is a required footnote to show whether your amounts are insured or exposed to custodial credit risk. So as of December 31st, 2020, we had a carrying balance of $45,346,451. $45,648,956, according to the bank. The bank balance, $764,908 was covered by FDIC insurance, and the rest was exposed because it was uninsured. However, collateral is held by the depository agents. So what that means is that the bank that's holding your funds is holding collateral in excess of the amount of your funds that it's holding to cover those in the event of a bank collapse. A portion of your deposits are in the pligot program, $161,623. Those are not insured or collateralized. Pligot acts more like a money market mutual fund, and they strive to maintain a net asset share of a dollar per share. At the bottom here is our investments footnote. So this shows the fair value of the investments. These are held by the pension trust funds at 123120. The next schedule I want to point out is the capital asset schedule. This shows the roll forward of capital assets from the prior year. It shows our increases. We had some increases in construction and progress, and we had $513,735 of other increases to capital assets. And we had some disposals this year in the amount of $47,535. Those were not fully depreciated, so that was a loss of $68,380. Appreciation for the year on the governmental activities was $934,207. The bottom of the page is the same information but for the business-type activities. So again, you can see we had some, we purchased some land, we had some construction in progress additions, and we had some infrastructure additions and capital asset additions of $926,891. Again, some disposals. Those were just about fully appreciated, so there was only a small loss for those. Appreciation for the year, $967,450. The next one I want to go over with you is the long-term debt footnote. So this just shows the total amount of the borough's debt. So we have two outstanding issuances. The series of 2020, we already went over. You saw it as proceeds coming in on the general fund revenues. This is the analysis of debt service requirements. So it goes by each year for the first five years and then in five-year increments after that. You can see what the amount do for principal and both interest and principal for the next five years and then in five-year increments after that. This page is roll forward of the debt from January 1st, 2020 to the end of the year. So we had in our series of 2012, we had retirements of $330,000, and then we had our new issuances of $14.3 million, our premiums, we had some additions to the compensated absence and our OPEB liability. On the business-type activities, we repaid $650,000 and amortized out some of the bond premiums from the prior year. Additions to compensated absences and then some also additions to the OPEB liability. The next thing I'm going to point out is the fine benefit pension plans. These things encompass several pages in your financial statements, but this one, I think, is the most important, really, and this shows what the roll forward of the liability was, well, actually, asset in your case. There is no liability right now. You have a net pension asset. What that means is your plan is just a little overfunded. So at December 31st, 2019, you had a net pension asset of $965,572. We had our service and interest costs for the year of about $1.5 million. Then we had our employer contributions, and we had some great returns on the market. So that $2.5 million really helped bump you up there. And to the end of the year, we had net changes in a positive way of $1.5 million. So our asset is now $2.5 million for the police pension plan. The non-uniform plan. We started out the year with an asset of $389,49. We had our service and interest costs. Then we had our employer contributions and our member contributions, and then net investment income of $1.9 million. So that gave us a positive net change on the non-uniform plan of $1.2 million. So our asset at the end of the year for the non-uniform plan is about $1.5 million. Here is the roll forward of the OPEB liability from the prior year. And it's broken down between the non-uniform and the police. So the non-uniform started the year with a liability of about $1.5 million, changes in the year of $175,000, so the liability at the end of the year is about $1.6 million. The police started with about $1.1 million, ended with about $1.3 million, increased about $173,000 for the year. This section is the required supplementary information section. These schedules are required to be included by the GASP. The first one here is your budget actual schedule for the general fund. It shows your original budget, your final budget, and then your actual amounts, and then the variance with the final budget. It looks like there were overages in the public works and culture and rec and debt service arenas. And then, of course, the debt-related items were budgeted for. The next few schedules are all related to pension plans. This, where this schedule will eventually be required to be presented for 10 years. Currently, we only have seven years of information. It's only been seven years since the standard went into effect. This will build up through a 10-year span, so you can compare the pension liability over the last seven years. You can compare the plan So you can compare the pension liability over the last seven years. You can compare the plan net position over the last seven years. And then the roll up to the current year net asset of about two point five million. This schedule is the last seven years of contributions for the police pension plan. And this schedule is the last seven years of investment returns for the police pension plan. So in two thousand and twenty, the return was sixteen point seventeen percent. And you can see in the prior year was also pretty good at twenty point six nine percent. The next schedule is the same information, but for the non-uniform plan. Again, the required contributions and the actually determined contributions. And then the investment returns for the non-uniform plan. So in two thousand and twenty, that plan returned fifteen point nine five percent. The prior year, twenty point five five, and then a loss in the prior year, just like the police had. This schedule is the change in the OPEB for the last three years. Again, this will roll up in your schedule eventually. These are the combining balance sheets for the other governmental funds that we discussed earlier. So it's broken down further by each of the non-major funds. And I'm just going to scroll through these because I know I'm taking up a lot of your time. And I do want to get to the last section. Here we go. So in two thousand and twenty, the borough had a single audit, which basically related to a grant that was received through the PennDOT for bridge replacement. That triggered the requirement for a single audit whenever a entity receives and expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal money in any current year, then they have to have a single audit performed. So this first thing that we see here, this is our independent auditor's report on internal control or financial reporting and on matters based in an audit in accordance with the government auditing standards. Now, this is something new because your financial statements typically aren't audited under government auditing standards. There's no need for it. So it was a different kind of audit this year that had to include the government auditing standards. And this talks about deficiencies in internal controls and the responsibilities for that. If there were any, they would be reported here. You can see here where it says the results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters required to be reported. The next schedule. Now keep in mind, this is the government auditing standard schedule. The next one, this is the uniform grant guidance auditor's report. So there's actually two additional auditor's reports for a single audit. And this one talks about the required requirements to be in compliance with the requirements of the uniform grant guidance. And it talks about your responsibility and our responsibility. And again, if we had any findings, they would be discussed here. So here at the bottom here, you see our opinion on each of your major federal programs that you have complied in all material respects. This is where we would report any findings if we had them. You can say here, we say we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control of our compliance that we consider to be material weaknesses. The next page is the actual schedule of expenditures of federal awards. I'll make this as big as I can. So we actually received some funds through the CDBG and through the highway planning and construction. The highway planning and construction grant obviously was the major program for the year. These are just required footnotes that go along with the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And basically, it's just you have to describe to them how you're presenting the schedule. This is the schedule of findings and question costs. This just shows the summary of auditor's results. And this is what's going to get uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse on behalf of the borough. So it describes the auditor's results. We had an unmodified opinion. We did not identify any significant deficiencies. We did not identify any material weaknesses, and there was no non-compliance. That was just with relation to the financial state. Keep in mind, we have to certify it too here. Then for the federal awards, which was the second report that we went over, we had no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, an unmodified opinion, and there were no findings required to be disclosed. Special for distinct distinguishing between type A and B was seven hundred fifty thousand. The borough did not qualify as a low-risk auditee only because the requirement to be able to be a low-risk auditee is that you have a single audit performed every year. So if you haven't had one done in the last two years, you're automatically a high-risk auditee. It doesn't have any reflection on the borough whatsoever. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council for Dale regarding this audit? Either from our council in person or council on Zoom. Okay, seeing none. Dale, I appreciate the overview.
Yeah, thank you. I hope everything went well and everyone's able to understand my zooming in and out of my financial statements.
Absolutely. It's nice to see good news.
All right. Well, have a great night.
Thank you. With that, we do need a motion to adopt the audit findings.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Get back to my agenda here. And with that, this will open the first round of public participation. So members of the public who are viewing through the Zoom platform, if you'd like to raise your hand, members of staff will be able to announce you and bring you, allow you to speak. In doing so, the comments will be heard by council both over the Zoom and us here in person. So any members of, any members of the public wishing to make public comment tonight, please raise your hand via Zoom.
Ms. Tackett, I've turned on your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to say I'm glad to see that the comprehensive plan update is underway and that there's a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. I would request that it would be helpful to see more details. Yeah, can you hear me? Okay.
Are you still there?
Sorry, yeah, there's a delay in my
We can still hear you.
Okay. So I was just going to say that it would be great if we could see the results of the the first part of the comprehensive plan on the website. And it would also be great to see some sort of community engagement exercise, maybe downtown where the streets are closed off. Maybe your consultants could do some information, try to get some information from people. Seems like that would be a really good opportunity to get feedback in a downtown situation. I would also like to request that on the website that planning commission packets be posted prior to the meetings. And then also prior to Borough Council meetings, if planning commission action memos could be included in your packets along with any documents referenced in the resolutions that are in your packet. I think that is pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tackett. Have a good night. At this time, Mr. Ewatt, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We will have another round of public participation later in the evening, as well as public participation joining each of the public hearings tonight. So with that, seeing no other hands raised, we will close this round of public participation and move on to section six of our agenda. Without any communications or council participation tonight. Ms. Dugan?
Hi, I was at the, oh, I guess it was two weeks ago, I attended the REC board meeting. And at that point, Ms. Gibbons had reported that she had met with members of Phoenixville First, Phoenixville OEM, Chamber of Commerce, and the mayor. And at that meeting, apparently, they discussed replacing our parades and eliminating all parades in town. Now, we were a little confused about which parades these were. Was it everybody's parade? Like, just, you know, we couldn't do our parades like Halloween and Christmas? Or we were going to have not be able to do Dogwood too, or, you know, what was going on here? And it seemed to be that the, it suggested that there was a lot of feedback saying that, like, from this group, that they did not want to continue with doing the parades, which was very upsetting to the REC board, given that whether or not it's something we were supposed to do. We have been running the Halloween parade for years. I've been part of planning it and staffing it for a long time. And what we decided, we were hoping that before, yeah, well, it surprised me that everybody was ready to move forward on this, given the fact that council hadn't even weighed in on it. So, but we decided what be a good idea is maybe suggest that we do a survey. We put a survey out there to find out if people in town actually wanted to have these parades. I mean, the attendance goes up and down, but the participation is the part that goes up and down. The attendance is really very high. Everybody likes to go and watch their Christmas, Halloween. You know, and even, you know, the Dogwood parade. So I don't know which ones these were for. We had not been alerted that this meeting was going to happen. So it was something that was really upsetting. So I said that I would absolutely look into it. And I was hoping if we could do a survey to find out what the appropriate plan is, given this group didn't seem to think that it was necessary to continue with what we had done before. So I was hoping that we would go forward with putting that survey out there to determine whether or not that's something that we want to continue with, because I know that a lot of the public is very much in support of the parades. So I would be very upset if that didn't happen, and I know a lot of people would be too. So, thank you.
Absolutely. I imagine we can work with staff to internally on that item. Any other council participation, questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Mayor Ursula.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. Welcome back. Glad that we all get to be together. And thank you to all of you who are joining us virtually tonight. Just a couple of updates. I wanted to congratulate the Phoenixville J.C.'s for an incredible Dogwood Festival, although it was nothing like any Dogwood we've seen in the past. It was definitely creative and we found new ways to engage people within our community. So congratulations to the Phoenixville J.C.'s, all the organizations and their sponsors who helped to make this year's Dogwood come together, even though a bit different. But I think there are some great events that hopefully we'll see in the future also incorporated into the larger Dogwood Festival once it's able to take place. Congratulations to our friends at Holy Ghost Church. They actually have developed and did a ribbon cutting for their free little pantry, similar to the Free Little Library concept. This is actually a pantry where individuals can walk up and get shelf-stable food. No questions asked. They can just walk up to them and receive them. The PAX, which is the Phoenixville Area Community Services, is actually working on a network of free little pantries throughout the Phoenixville area where individuals who may need food are able to actually walk up and get shelf-stable food. So very interesting. Definitely check that out at Holy Ghost Church. And you can also learn more about those through PAX. I just want to congratulate all of our dear friends at Schuylkill Elementary, Manavon, and also Barclay Elementary for their fifth grade promotion ceremonies. It was a lot of fun to attend with all of you last Thursday. Thank you so much for having me. And then also congratulations to our Phoenixville Area Middle School eighth graders on their promotion, which took place on Friday. A shout out to People's Light Theater. Of course, People's Light is located in Malvern. But they did come to our community and it was a little out-of-the-box program that they did in the parking lot of St. Peter's Church. And it was a reading of the first act of a play about the life of Bayard Rustin, which I would highly encourage people who may not be aware of Bayard Rustin. He is actually a civil rights leader and helped to plan MLK's March on Washington, DC, and was born in Westchester. So definitely an incredible individual, an incredible life and civil rights leader. So something interesting to look into. Tomorrow, congratulations, of course. We have our graduation ceremony coming up for the Phoenixville Area High School. Congratulations to all those high school students. And as students prepare for summer, I just wish all of you a very safe and happy summer. And we look forward to seeing you all next year. June nineteenth, of course, will be Juneteenth. Juneteenth being the celebration of the news reaching Texas, which was the furthest point at that point in time in eighteen sixty-five on June nineteenth, when the people of Texas actually learned about two and a half years later that the emancipation proclamation had taken place, eliminating slavery. And so Juneteenth is definitely a unique celebration to celebrate individuals and heritage, certainly around that celebration of the ending of slavery throughout the United States at the time. We do have a number of programs that are taking place this month. You can find out on the Diversity in Action website and their Facebook page, specifically about programs to celebrate Juneteenth and the heritage of that incredible celebration. Also on June nineteenth is Dinner on Vert, which helps to promote and is a big fundraiser for our Anne's Heart, which is our emergency code blue warming shelter. Check out Anne's Heart website to find more on Dinner on Vert. It is a secret location that gets distributed a couple hours before the actual dinner takes place. Let me see. Last but not least, of course, June twenty-sixth, there is a business crawl. If you do go visit some of our businesses in the historic downtown district, you will see some incredible flyers. Check out that business crawl and it's just a great way to support our local businesses. And then finally, I just want to give a shout out to our dear friends who continue with our vaccination program. Our vaccination program has specifically been targeting individuals who are twelve years and over by going to the school district Renaissance Academy as well as O N J. Roberts. And that is a group made up of our Office of Emergency Management, Valley Forge and West End Fire Companies, the Phoenixville Hospital, and a special thank you to Gateway Pharmacy, who actually sources and provides all of that vaccines for that program. In most weeks, that program can vaccinate almost a thousand people. And so all volunteers who are running that program and Gateway Pharmacy has been so generous in helping us to get the vaccines to ensure that the vast majority of people within our community are vaccinated. If you still need a vaccine, definitely check out Chester County, chestercounty.org, the website there. You can find out information or you can call the Gateway Pharmacy. And they have a number of vaccines that they are distributing throughout the week from the pharmacy itself. Finally, a happy Father's Day to everyone who's celebrating, to any fathers out there, and also father figures. And a very, very happy and safe Fourth of July to everyone. Although this year's celebration may be different, we look forward to celebrating in person again in two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, the next section of our agenda tonight is appointments and public resolutions. Each month, we ask interested residents of the borough to contact us for appointment to any of our boards or committees in which we currently have vacancies or have ones coming up. We do have three. We have three appointments tonight to consider that came out of Police Personnel and Public Safety's meeting last night. I will defer to Beth for the appointments.
Before we do that, Jen, do we see anybody in the audience that is one of the appointments? I know that they were invited tonight as well as last night, but that would have given them double duty. So I just want to make sure they have an opportunity and other council members that aren't a part of the committee are able to.
Laura and Shan Lee are with us this evening. Mary Foot was unable to be here tonight. And those were the three folks we were looking for.
Shall we invite them in or should?
I would say if council has any questions, we can invite them in, but otherwise.
Okay. With that being said, then I would make a motion to appoint Laura Lorenza to the Beautification Advisory Commission, with a term expiring October 31st, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, for the appointment of Laura Lorenz. Any questions on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
With that, I'd like to make a motion appointing Shan Lee Fisher to the REC board for a term expiring April 30th, 2025, and that was recommended in committee last night. 3-0.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the appointment of Shan Lee Fisher to REC board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
And lastly, but certainly not least, I would like to make a motion reappointing Mary Foot to the Tree Advisory Commission for a new term expiring June 30th, 2026, and that was also recommended 3-0 in committee last night.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the appointment of, the reappointment of Mary Foot to the. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. I appreciate everybody's volunteering to step up to the various boards and committees with those appointments. We still currently have an opening on our zoning hearing board, and we have one opening on our recreation board. So any residents of the borough who are interested in volunteering and taking part in either these boards or committees, or also volunteering to, for future vacancies. We have BAC.
We have a real appointment scheduled for October.
Got it. Okay, so there's at least an opening on ZHB. Sorry, misspoke. Any residents who are interested in applying to that, please contact either borough staff or your council person. We'd be happy to send you the application and walk you through the process. Okay. With that, we have no new business tonight. We do have two resolutions to consider. Mr. Crack for the resolutions? Or is it? Okay. So what is, sorry, a little rusty here. What is council's pleasure for the resolution pertaining to Phases 3 and 6 of Steel Point?
I'll make the resolution to the Council of Borough of Phoenixville to officially grant final approval to Phases 3 and 6 of the subdivision and land development plan, known as French Creek West Development, otherwise known as Steel Point.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss, for the final approvals for Phase 3 and 6 of Steel Point. Any questions from council on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, thank you. I do have a question with regard to access to the trail during construction. I do see in the resolution under Item G that there are provisions in there that, to keep the trail open, and that there will be no work on weekends or holidays that would cause the trail to be closed, but I can tell you, as I've discussed with you, and as I discussed with the borough manager, I've heard from bicyclists about a current detour on the trail that's all but impossible to cross by bike and even walking. It's very rough. I would, I would ask that we tighten up this language with regard to the preserving access to the trail during construction. A, you know, Item 3 under Item G, G3 in the resolution, if any portion of the trail is required to be temporarily closed without any ability to pass due to safety reasons. And there it goes. An alternate route will be provided by the applicant to the extent feasible. I would like to see some language, not to the extent feasible, but to an extent that replicates the current state of the trail, instead of hacking out a path over rock, which is, which is what they've done. And that, I mean, I really think that's one area where the language can be tightened up. You know, but I didn't, I mean, I didn't vote for this project in the first place, so, and I still don't see anything here. I still think, if you look at the plan and you look at the green space drawing in the plan, if there's still scant open space in this project, I still think it's way too dense. So, I mean, here I am talking about changing language and resolution, and I'll tell you what, I'm probably not going to vote for it anyway, but, you know, just, just thinking about those of us who use the trail, and I am a user of the trail. You know, I think something more needs to be done to provide safe access, not just passable access, but, but safe and expeditious access when there is work disrupting the trail. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Kirchner. The developer is online, so we can bring her in to ask those questions of, and I believe we've, we've discussed this with her beforehand, so if Kristi is available, we can unmute her and have her turn on her camera and discuss how we can provide better trail access. Hello, Kristi.
Good evening. Thank you all. The trail is obviously a very important resource here in Phoenixville, and we know that and value that, and have been able to keep access in a safe way through the construction area, and it has to have, it has had to change locations, those detours, as we have moved through the process. We are pleased to be able to say that we are nearly through the construction of the new bridge that will connect to Paradise Street and the new firehouse parcel there, and so that will really relieve a lot of the difficult portion of that, of that trail detour. So we expect to have the trail in good shape very shortly.
Kristi, would you be amenable to, instead of the type stone that you currently have, working with the borough, with Mr. Watson, that we look at some millings and maybe some stone dust, which would be, it would compact it much tighter than what is currently there? I think that would, it wouldn't be like blacktop, it'd be pretty darn close with the stone dust.
We can talk and work with Brian and the Public Works Department to make sure that we are providing what is needed for those detours, yes.
Mr. Kirchner, for the purpose of the trail, does that sound like a reasonable accommodation?
I, I think so, yes, as long as you can ride a bike over it, because the way it is now, I do not see how, and I've heard from bicyclists, that they cannot ride a bike over that detour that's, that's there now. Plus, there's a big iron, there, the last time I walked on it, which I think was Saturday, there is still big iron plate there. So that's very difficult to navigate if you're on a bicycle.
There, I don't, is there a plate on, on our site?
There was, yeah.
Okay, it was, it was still in the lot when I was there just the other day.
Okay, great. With that, that item just settled, any other questions from council for this motion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-2.
Thank you.
Kristi? And our second resolution tonight for consideration is pertaining to the Chester County Community Revitalization Program Grant for the wastewater treatment project. Well, it's council's pleasure for this resolution.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass a resolution for the submission of Chester County 2021 Community Revitalization Program Grant, application for the wastewater treatment plant, the Somax project.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. We now have a series of five public hearings that we will be bouncing back and forth between council and our solicitor. For the first one pertaining to housing and Chapter 11 of our ordinances, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing in relation to ordinance repealing Chapter 11, Housing and Enacting and Updating Chapter 11 Housing and Real Property.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are now opening a public hearing, and I will defer to our solicitor, Mr. Garner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. As noted, this is a public hearing to take public comment on a comprehensive rewrite to the Borough Housing Code, which is presently codified in Chapter 11 of the Code of Ordinances, known as Housing and Real Property. Procedurally, notice of this hearing and the intent to adopt the ordinance was advertised in the Mercury on May 31st of this year. Because the entire ordinance was not published, a complete copy of the ordinance was provided to the Chester County Law Library on May 21st. In conjunction with adoption of the Property Maintenance Code, which is the next public hearing, this is a comprehensive update to the Borough's Housing Code, which I would note was adopted originally in 1976. So certainly, you're well within your rights to consider updating what's been there. Substantively, there are six parts to this ordinance. I should point out that from a practical matter, there's no changes to the practice or policy of the Department of Code Enforcement with respect to how they operate, but this is simply updating, recodifying, and eliminating many duplicate provisions between the housing code you had from '76 and the new property maintenance code. The six parts of the ordinance would be Part 1, which is general standards and responsibilities. Part 2 is definitions. Part 3 is registration, licensing, and inspection of residential rental units. Part 4 relates to tenant registration. Part 5 is improved real property transfer, inspection, and occupancy. And Part 6 is enforcement, notice, and penalties. And as I've indicated, we are not changing practice or procedure of the borough. We are simply rewriting and resequencing Chapter 11. At this point, I would open the floor for public comment with respect to the proposed ordinance. I believe Ms. Logan will acknowledge you, and you can raise your hand on the Zoom platform, and we're happy to take your comment. We'd ask for your name and address, please.
Mr. Garner, at this time, I have no hands raised for public participation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Logan. I would note for council's information that this ordinance has been advertised for enactment this evening, so you're well within your rights to adopt the ordinance tonight. And, Mr. President, at this point, we could close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Garner.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, to close the public hearing A. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Our first public hearing is now closed. We will take voting considerations at the end of the public hearings, so we'll, we'll move on through the public hearings here. So the next item up, we have an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of Code Enforcement with Real Property Maintenance Code.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing regarding ordinance amendment to Chapter 5 Code Enforcement, Part 2, Property Maintenance Code.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with Mr. Kirchner out of the room. With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Garner, our solicitor, for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. President. This, again, is a public hearing to take public comment with respect to ordinance amendment. In this case, the ordinance would adopt the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code as part of Chapter 5 of the Borough's Codified Ordinances. Procedurally, notice of the hearing, as well as the intent to adopt the ordinance, was published in the Mercury on May 31st of this year. The complete copy of the ordinance has also been provided to the Chester County Law Library. That occurred on May 21st. This ordinance, if adopted, would essentially replace the current 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, which is part of the Borough ordinance presently, and adopt the 2021 version of the International Property Maintenance Code as prepared by the International Code Council. As I noted, as part of the last public hearing, these changes would be in conjunction with the housing ordinance, which we discussed several moments ago. There are essentially three substantive sections to this ordinance. Those sections are purpose, the revisions that the borough has made to the International Property Maintenance Code, and the third section is violation and penalties. All of those sections are very similar to what's currently in the ordinance with respect to the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code. At this point, if there's anyone in the public that wishes to provide comments to Borough Council, now would be the time. Ms. Logan will recognize you on the Zoom platform, and if you have any comments, council would be happy to hear them.
Again, any members of the public joining us tonight via Zoom, if you'd like to digitally raise your hand, a member of our staff will allow you to speak with questions pertaining to this public hearing of this ordinance amendment. We'll give a moment here just to compensate for any time lag.
Mr. President, it appears that there is no public comment. Again, this ordinance has been advertised for your consideration this evening, should you choose to adopt it. You can, free to close the public hearing and move ahead with the next public hearing or act on the ordinance.
And what is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion to close public hearing B. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. We will now move on to public hearing C, which is pertaining to Chapter 15 of Motor Vehicles and Traffic. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing in relation to ordinance amendment, Chapter 15, in regards to motor vehicle and, motor vehicles and traffic.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are now opening a public hearing pertaining to Item C of the public hearings. Mr. Garner?
Okay, thank you again, Mr. President. The third public hearing this evening is for the purpose of taking public comment on changes to the master traffic ordinance, which is codified in Chapter 15 of the Borough Ordinances Motor Vehicles and Traffic. From a procedural standpoint, notice of the hearing and the intent to adopt the ordinance was published and advertised in the Mercury on May 31st. A Chester County Law Library received a full copy of the ordinance on May 21st. There are four substantive changes to the traffic ordinance set forth in the ordinance. The following sections would be amended. First section is 15. First section is 15-201 Maximum Speed Limits Established on Certain Streets. The ordinance would establish 15 miles per hour on streets known as Ashland Street, Church Avenue, Mill Street, Price Street, Prospect Street, Richards Lane, and Taylor Alley. Section two of the ordinance would amend section 15-224 Loading and Unloading Zones would eliminate two areas of loading and unloading zones that presently exist on Church Street. Section three of the ordinance would amend section 15-402 Regarding Parking Prohibited at All Times in Certain Locations. In this case, the ordinance would establish on the north side of Breckenridge Street, a parking prohibited zone. And finally, section four of the ordinance amending section 15-1003 Snow Emergency Routes. A portion of Buchanan Street would be designated as an emergency route during a snow emergency. Those would be the changes to the master traffic ordinance. If now would be the time for anyone from the public wishing to provide comment to Borough Council, please come forward, state your name and address. Ms. Logan will acknowledge your comment on the Zoom platform if you would raise your hand. It appears that we have no public comment as part of this public hearing. Mr. President, again, the ordinances advertised for Borough Council's consideration would suggest we can close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close the public hearing for item C under public hearings tonight. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. With that, that brings us to item D of our public hearings tonight, ordinance to vacate an unnamed alley between Evergreen and Christman. Questions? What is council's pleasure for this public hearing?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing in relation to the ordinance to vacate an unnamed alley between Evergreen and Christman Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore to open a public hearing. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now entering our fourth public hearing. Mr. Garner.
Thank you again, Mr. President. This public hearing again is to take public comment with respect to a proposed ordinance to vacate an unnamed alley, which has been laid out but unopened within the borough. Procedurally, this hearing notice and the intent to adopt the proposed ordinance was advertised in the Mercury both on May 31st and June 7th. The complete copy of the ordinance was provided to the Chester County Law Library on May 21st. I believe council is aware that the Borough Code pursuant to section 1731 allows Borough Council to vacate streets, alleys, roads, by and through an ordinance, which you would be doing tonight. In this case, the alley in question is 20 feet wide. It's located between Evergreen Lane and Christman Street. I understand there's actually, again, while it's laid out on paper, it was never opened and therefore never utilized. All properties have other alternate means of access rather than to use the alley, which is a requirement of the Borough Code anyway. At this point, I would open the floor for public comment. If anyone wishes to address council concerning the ordinance to vacate this alley, Ms. Logan will acknowledge you on the Zoom and will be happy to take your comment. It would appear, Mr. President, that there is no public comment to council on this proposed ordinance change. Free to close the hearing and adopt the ordinance this evening if you care to.
Thank you, Mr. Garner.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close the public hearing. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. And our fifth public hearing tonight, item E, to consider authorizing the condemnation by eminent domain of real property for municipal purposes. What is council's pleasure on this item tonight?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to consider an ordinance authorizing the condemnation by eminent domain of real property for municipal purposes to open a hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in our fifth public hearing tonight. Mr. Garner.
Thank you. Coming to the home stretch, Mr. President. This public hearing is to take public comment with respect to an ordinance to acquire certain real property to allow for road improvements at Bridge and Star Streets within the borough. Procedurally, the hearing notice and the ordinance and the intent to adopt same was published in the Mercury on May 31st. Again, because the complete copy of the ordinance was not advertised, the ordinance was provided to the Chester County Law Library on May 21st. The substance of this ordinance basically permits and allows the execution of and filing of the documents needed for the acquisition of the property. At this point, I would open the floor for a public comment. Slogan, again, if there's anyone that wishes to provide comment to council with respect to this ordinance, now would be the time. Anticipating, again, no public comment. Mr. President, we'd suggest we close the hearing. Again, the ordinance has been advertised for council's enactment this evening if you desire to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. Counsel?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to close item E's public hearing. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. With that, we do, so we now have five items ready for consideration by council. We can just go through them if we have council, what is council's pleasure for item A?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville for the purposes of repealing the current chapter 11 housing in order to enact an updated chapter 11 Housing and Real Property.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley to adopt item A here. Questions on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries seven zero for item B pertaining to code enforcement of property maintenance code.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to chapter five Code Enforcement, part two, Property Maintenance Code.
Second.
New motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion for adopting this amendment? Seeing no questions or comments from council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item C, we have a, we have amendment to consider for motor vehicles and traffic.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion?
No, I'll just make comment that I think some of our neighbors will appreciate some of the changes being made in this.
Absolutely. I appreciate staff and everybody working on this one. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance to vacate an unnamed alley between Evergreen and Christman Street.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion?
I just wonder, who owns the land now?
Ms. Garner.
By operation of law, when a road is vacated, the abutting property owners on each side of the alley would own 10 feet. So it just, it would become their property. And if they chose to prepare a deed, they could incorporate it into their property, but it becomes theirs.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And our final item tonight, item E, what is council's pleasure?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the condemnation by eminent domain of real property for municipal purposes.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six one. That concludes our public hearings tonight. Thank you everybody for that. Thank you, Mr. Garner. With that, we will now move into reports committee from committees, boards, and commissions. And I will turn it over to you, Mr. Moore, for planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had the May meeting, May 13th of the Phoenixville Planning Commission. There were a number of items, two projects mainly were discussed, which are both in front of us this evening for review and approval and consideration. And so I'll begin with discussing the resolution approving the preliminary final lot consolidation. I'll make a motion to consider approving the preliminary final lot consolidation and land development plan for Teig Lumber as recommended 5-0 by the Planning Commission in their action memo of May 14th, 2021. And I'll leave it to, this is doing some adjustments to their property. I'll leave it to Mr. Crack to explain a little bit further. And there are six waivers being requested.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley for the Teig Lumber Project with Planning Commission. Mr. Crack, a few details, please.
Sure. I believe also, in case you have questions beyond me, I believe the one of the representatives is online. So generally speaking, this has been about four years in the making. It's taken quite a while. It's primarily a lot consolidation and then some stormwater management with some infrastructure improvements on the property as it relates to the storage of lumber, racking, and things of that sort. But what took an amount of time was, as you know, we have worked very hard to try and continue the trail on this side of French Creek beyond Borough Hall here. You know, we acquired the property next door to us to continue out. And of course, the property on the other side of Teig, which is where the fire station is at, will be the continuation. And so we wanted to preserve that right. And there was a lot of dialogue about what that meant and how to go about it. That would be on the north side of their property. And then on the south side, we have the issue of the right-of-way that exists for the continuation of Hall Street, which we are working with other property owners to ultimately continue that extension from Bridge Street out to Paradise Street. There was a lot of good dialogue. We had to work our way through it. Teig stepped up to the plate. Their attorney helped us. Mr. Garner helped us through that process. And ultimately, what this does is it, while it approves their consolidation and their improvements on their property, we also get a perpetual lease easement, shall we say, on the north side for the continuation of the trail. They'll have a fence there to delineate between their property and the trail. But it gives us the area that we need to continue that trail along the top of bank of the French Creek. And then the second portion is they, we work through the needed right-of-way for the extension of Hall Street. So there, we will get an additional 15 feet between, there was 30 feet of availability. They're going to retain 15 feet, and then we will retain 15 feet. And then there's a fence that will be installed. But generally speaking, that's the gist of what this is about. I'm very pleased to have earned out all of these details the way we did. And I appreciate very much what Teig Lumber did in working through the process with both Chuck and I and Mr. Watson as we went through this process. Our engineers worked out the devil in the details. And we're at that place where this is ready for your approval with staff's recommendation to move forward as obviously we benefit on the north and south sides of that property.
Any questions from council for staff or the applicant tonight? We can bring the applicant in if needs be, but if there's no questions, it is always nice to see the addition of future trail potential. And we appreciate staff working with all our applicants for continuing the trail growth in the borough. Seeing no questions from council, we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Just like to add, Mr. President, it's great that, you know, that's an important business, longstanding business here in the borough. And it's good that they were able to work with us and we can continue to support their presence here in the middle of the borough.
Absolutely. And back to you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Our second resolution tonight is for a project called the Lofts at Church Street. This is a, an important site of the former Borough Hall. We have before us a project, a four-story, 68-unit apartment building with ground parking. There's pretty good-looking image in your packet to kind of show you what it's looked like and the elevation and so forth. There's two waivers. So with that, I'll make the resolution to officially approve the subdivision and land development plan known as the Lofts at Church Street. It's, as I said, it's creation of a four-story with a ground floor parking deck, 68-unit apartment complex, including lighting, landscaping, utilities, and sidewalks, and roadway improvements, road control and stormwater management. And there are two minor waivers requested.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss.
I asked Mr. Crack to explain a little bit about how we're going to proceed. This is a very tight construction project, and I want to make sure that people in the neighborhood are aware of how they're going to, how we're going to approach it.
Sure. First and foremost, I think council, some of council may remember, this is the third attempt at this project. There were two previous plans that were approved. The first one was approximately about the same size look and feel, which was approved. And this goes back to 2013 when we swapped the property for where the recreation center is at now. Then the second project that ultimately got approved was really not to the liking of most of council, but you approved it because of the parameters that it was presented. But it was equally as high as the steeple on the church next door, dwarfing the residents on Hall Street, 100 and something units, and certainly not necessarily to the degree that council wanted to do. Thankfully, the current developer did a project over on Walnut Street. The former NID mill did a phenomenal job there, decided they liked working in the borough and came back and acquired this property and has brought it back to the size. They understood the dynamics of what bothered you from the second approval. Now this approval brings it back to the scale that was original in the first and to the scale that I believe that you are appreciative of. To answer Mr. Moore's basic question, this is going to require some sensitive work around multiple power lines, very narrow streets. You know, notwithstanding, we create a conundrum onto ourselves because we closed down Bridge Street on a Friday and Saturday. That shouldn't impact Church Street as it relates to the construction. But we do have to work out the devil in the details of the laydown area for all of the construction materials, any crane work that's going to happen. So in the, as part of the resolution, there is a requirement that we have not only pre-construction meetings, but also the development of a schedule as to how all this demolition and how the construction is going to occur to allay any concerns that you might have. So I know that if you have further questions beyond what I've just said, the representatives are online if you need them. But we believe the project is ready to go. It's been a long It's been a long time, you know, eight years in the making and it's a good project.
Questions from council? Thank you for the background on that. And I know the applicant is eager.
Because it is the middle ward and I do represent it, I do have to ask about parking. So it's sixty-eight units and parking is provided for those units.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, just curious if we have any indication of timing for breaking ground, if any of that's?
Five minutes ago.
That's in?
There, there's an excavator on site. I believe as soon as a demo permit is issued, they will. I don't even know if the issue hasn't been applied for.
Which I will say the neighborhood will be happy to see that demolition happen. There's been quite some trouble with the existing property still being there.
There's, there's literally an excavator on site and the site's been fenced off in the last week. So they are, they are more than ready to proceed this time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Kirk, are you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I do think this, this plan is much, much better for the neighborhood than the previous plan that we had approved. It takes that huge wall off of, off of Hall Street behind the building. And it, and it's a good reuse for that property in a good location for it. I, I do have a question as to, because at one time we were looking at affordable senior housing there. That was, I think that was the plan that aesthetically probably wasn't best for the, the neighborhood behind it. And I'm just, and I see there's a very modest donation of ten thousand dollars to the borough's affordable housing effort. But I, I just want to get a little bit more information as to what kind of, I, I guess, what kind of price point are we looking at? Can this, is this considered affordable housing, luxury apartments? You know, what, what, what kind of class are we looking at here? Classification are we looking at here in terms of housing affordability?
Mr. Kirk, we, we do have the applicant in the lobby or the, well, the Zoom lobby, so we can bring him in to, to answer any questions. And I, I think that's a good.
Mr. Murray, if you would engage your camera, we'll be able to see you. Thank you.
Yes, and I think Roman might be able to answer that better than I can on the, the type of client. I believe that, that it, you know, it's going to be a mid-range. It is not low income or workforce affordable housing. This is basically scaled to be in the same range as the other project, same price point as the other project that he developed here in the borough. It's being developed as an attractive building with, with brick and attractive windows to give that same, same look and style as, as what he did over at the, the factory. I know that the engineer has been actively working with the, the borough engineer and, and making sure that, you know, the streetscapes are enhanced, you know, to the current borough streetscape requirements with the tree wells. We're talking about park benches along the way and trying to keep us an area on Dean Street open for, for the residents in, in the area as well. I don't know if I explained it well enough for you, Roman, or if you want to add anything.
Um, I mean, I think you nailed it. Price point wise, we're thinking in the mid thirteen hundreds, low fourteen hundreds for the one bedrooms, eighteen, nineteen hundred, possibly two thousand, like for the top two bedroom that we have. Basically similar to what the other project that we developed is getting, we're looking for market rate. Obviously gonna, one of the emphasis that I'm going to try to push on this project is try to get a little bit more intriguing finish options and higher quality so that we can compete with what's around and try to push the area. Cause I generally enjoy Phoenixville. I think it's a great location. And the fact that we're right off the main street, I think we, like, the area deserves a good building. And like, like Mike said, we're definitely not going to be at the highest, but we're not, we're not going to be in the fort. We're going to be in the middle range.
Just to circle back to Mr. Kirkner to make sure that any questions there before we move on to anybody else.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions on the project in front of us from council?
I guess to the same point Mr. Kirkner was making, we have talked about potentially, you know, developers being interested in having a few units that were to be considered affordable. And is that something that would ever be of interest or that the developer would be open to?
Well, I, I guess let me explain that because I guess I have more, more history than, than Roman does. And I, I guess one of the first projects that we brought in, out in Eland, they, they volunteered to provide a percentage of affordable units in that project. And I think through discussions with the borough, it, it was determined it's really, really hard to manage that and keep tabs on it. And that's where this, I guess, fund came about that's being managed by the, the Health Foundation, the, the, the Phoenixville Health Foundation to take money. And that's what the contribution here is for, to go to that affordable housing fund so that it can be used by individuals that, that need money either for the security deposit or the first and last month's rent. I think there was a study done that, that these were the type of things that the workforce needed and had trouble coming up with these initial upfront funds. And that's why, you know, this, this fund is being established versus having developers put the, put affordable house, affordable units in these new projects. That'll be difficult to manage, maintain, make sure those people are meeting the income requirements that I don't think the, the developers or the borough really, I guess we had the bandwidth to, to manage and, and keep to make sure it, it's provided for the appropriate folks. So now people can apply, and Jean can correct me if I'm, I'm misstating anything, is they comply for the funds through the Health Foundation and they can be applied if they, if they are qualified to, for this assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I think that's really helpful for not only council, but the public to understand kind of the workings of that. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I will just say, we have, this is the third plan that we've seen on this. And I do appreciate the, one of the things that I, I did want to see with this project particularly is it does have three facing sides to, three very visible facing sides. And the applicant has done a nice job with, with the, at least the presentations and the, and the artist renderings of what the, that all three sides will be attractive and uniform. So I do appreciate the, the attention to detail on that. Was that any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else, Mr. Moore?
Nothing at this point. Those were the main outcomes of the last meeting, Ryan and everyone, that our next planning commission meeting is six P M. This Thursday, June tenth. And that will be partially in person. The commission will be, will be, will be, will be here, but not open, but on Zoom as well, correct? Exactly the same as tonight setup. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. With, with that, we'll move on to Harb with Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to can make a motion to consider the approval of the certificate of appropriateness for a sign installation request for two thirty-six Bridge Street as recommended in Harb four zero per the action memo dated June seventh, twenty twenty one.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion for this sign application? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Second, I would like to make a motion to consider the approval of the certificate of appropriateness for window and door replacement requests for thirty-seven Bridge Street as recommended in Harb seven zero per the, the action memo dated June seventh, twenty twenty one.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on this motion? I'll just say I'm, I'm glad to see the new owner of this building is putting in extraordinary amounts of effort to, to bring it back to its former beauty. So the, the new windows and doors are, will look great on it. So seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Weiss?
That's everything out of Harb. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkner, Regional Planning Committee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Not much to report. The Phoenixville Area Clean Energy Alliance grant had been awarded in April. And they're now in process with completing that plan set for spring of twenty twenty-two. That's, I think, four of the six regional planning committee municipalities are are members of that, not Phoenixville, and I don't think Charlestown is, but the other, other four are. And then there's working on a D Ball Trail Action Plan, talk of a virtual open house on June fifteenth, whatever that is, virtual open house. So that's it. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkner. Rec Board, Ms. Dugan?
Only a few things to, to report. One of the things I have is a storytime in the park. Actually, the day starts on, it starts on the ninth, which is tomorrow, I think, and a rain date of the tenth. And the second one of these is August eleventh with a rain date of August twelfth. And that would be at Reeves Park. It's at ten A M. And it's just a all ages and families kickoff and wrap up. It's two things, summer reading program with in-person storytimes in Reeves Park. And the other thing I have is registration is still available for a few of the week-long summer camps. Art, science, Lego and sports camps are available. The registration information is available on phoenixville.org on the Parks and Rec page. And other than that, most of our stuff is filled up. So we're really coming back to life here. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dugan. That's good to hear. I don't know if we have any reporting out for BAC. I don't know if they had any action. Oh, they meet next week. Sorry about that. So with that, we'll move on to Ms. Berkeley with T A C.
We are also in a rare occasion where we will meet next week. So no, no action to report since last council meeting.
Great, that's easy. We'll move on to section thirteen of our agenda tonight with council action referred to from council committees. First up tonight, we have police personnel, Public Safety Committee, Ms. Berkeley?
No action report, rare time in my life where I have a little to say. We will meet again next month and thank you for all those who were willing to take appointments. We were very glad to fill those positions.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan, would you like to report out for Parks and Rec Committee tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, make them, wait, hold on. Okay, I'll make a motion that we consider authorizing the submission of temporary community event applica, applications beginning June ninth of this year with events starting on September or after September first.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. So with this, we'll be beginning to accept C C Es tomorrow if council approves this tonight for events that would then be September first and later. So any questions from council on this item tonight?
I would just ask, does Steph feel like they'll have enough time to prep and, you know, get things in order with moving the date up a little bit?
We, we feel very comfortable, we can accommodate.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I will make another motion to consider supporting the Civil War Centennial Memorial Project in Reeves Park.
Second? Second?
Motion by Ms. Bert, Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirkner. Questions on this motion?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking through the motion and just to, just to reiterate what was discussed in Parks and Rec. Part of the notion of revising the current memorial is to remove the existing painting because legitimately so. It represents what was in the nineteen sixties was represented, was thought of as being, you know, showing, you know, unity coming together from a hundred years of the war and, but in many ways represents the notion of the lost cause. But I had discussed, and I raised the question of whether it would be possible, the painting is going to be removed. And there was discussion about providing that painting to the Historical Society. And I was one, I don't see whether that's been determined. And I just wanted to reiterate my point that I don't think that this piece of history should go away. It was there, it's been there for six, for, for all these years. If it can be kept and provided to in some other locations, such as the Historical Society, and appropriate information provided as to why what was once thought of as being, you know, an uplifting, you know, way of communicating where we were a hundred years after the Civil War, has encoded in a lot of stuff that is really incorrect. And, you know, could even be considered offensive by some. I think it's important not to lose that piece of artwork and not just to stick it in a cellar somewhere or to throw it away. So that was discussed at the, it was, and I, I believe the people who were involved in this or effort did make a commitment, a verbal commitment at the time to see about, you know, maintaining that piece of artwork and providing some educational context and display of it. And I'm just hoping that as this project continues, since we're voting to support it, that, that an effort can be made around that. Around preservation of the, of the old painting and some way of providing some education around it.
I, very valid points, Mr. Moore. And I, I remember discussing that. And for the purpose tonight, I think this is just an initial kickoff of, of support. And there's not a financial note or, and I believe that, you know, I, I know they had made some, there's good dialogue about, you know, where it could go. I think we'll have future action to, to require where that painting could go since it is borough property. We have the ability to dictate that. So, but very good points. Any other questions from council on this motion?
Yeah, I, I just want to chime in. You know what? I'm okay, I'm okay with chucking this painting. I've always found it offensive. Romanticizing rebellion against the United States of America to, and, and, you know, I can remember ever since junior high having arguments with kids. Oh, no, it was about states' rights. And it was never about states' rights. It was about enslaving African Americans. That's, so, you know, they want to trash this, trash this whole, this whole twisted, sordid history of the Civil War. Civil War was for one thing, to end slavery.
Second?
Yeah. Just throw the damn thing out. I, I know that's not part of the vote tonight, but that's my two cents.
You're not seeking to amend the motion? Any other questions or comments from council tonight on this motion? Not sure we can follow up with that one. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Ms. Dugan?
And finally, on this, I will make a motion to approve the installation of the pinwheels in Reeves Park.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley enthusiastically. Questions on this motion? Seeing none? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Dugan. With that, we'll turn over to policy with Mr. Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not sure I can follow that act, but two motions tonight out of policy. The first, I'd like to consider scheduling and make, make a motion to consider scheduling and advertising an ordinance amendment, repealing Chapter Six, which is Conduct, Part Thirteen, which is temporary face coverings as recommended in committee four zero.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Dalton?
And for my second motion, I'd like to make a motion to consider a motion to suspend enforcement of the temporary face covering ordinance pending final repeal of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dalton, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion? Since this is an ordinance in our books, we do have to go through the legal process of advertising and repealing it. So this is to cover that gap period, effectively repealing the ordinance. So any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Dalton?
Uh, nothing further. Out of policy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks. Mr. Weiss with Infrastructure, Technology, and Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this month. Our next meeting is one week from tonight on the 15th. It will be held virtually at 7:00 PM. Or maybe here. We'll talk. Thanks.
Stay tuned. Ms. Dugan with Finance?
Okay, I'll bundle one, two, and three and make a motion to approve the 2021 prepaid dated 4/10/2021 to 5/7/2021 in the amount of $3,013,703.24. Approve the 2021 prepaid credit card statement dated 4/10/2021 to 5/7/2021 in the amount of $61,801.85. And to approve the 2021 prepaid ACH dated 4/30/2021 in the amount of $31,313.67.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero.
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve the budget increase 2021-009 in the amount of $40,000 from liquid fuels balance to liquid fuels road maintenance contracted services due to needed line and crosswork striping.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Ms. Dugan?
That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. With that, we will open up our second and final round of public participation. Any members of the public that are joining us via the Zoom webinar platform, please raise your hand digitally, and a member of staff can call on you and unlock your microphone in order to allow you to, to address council tonight. And we will give a few moments pause here to make up for any digital time lag that may be existing. So again, if you are wishing to address council tonight, please raise your hand digitally, and we will allow you to speak. Staff is informing me that no members of public are raising their hands, so with that, we will close this round of public participation. Mr. Manager, is there anything in the staff reports that you'd like to address tonight?
Nothing other than we will, Mr. Watson and I will be meeting with the arborists to set out the schedule tomorrow. So we're moving forward and hopefully have some for the, the Tree Advisory Commission on Monday next week.
Very good. Any questions from council for any of the items in the staff reports of your packet tonight? Seeing none, that concludes our agenda. What is council's pleasure?
To adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, everybody. We will see you next month.
Aye.